Call this meeting of the Marshall City Council by order. We'll open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have an agenda in front of us. Are there any additions or corrections to that agenda? Hearing none, that's the agenda we'll operate on. The first thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on July 11th, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Amanda, to approve the meeting minutes. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And that motion passes. The consent agenda, first item up is consider a resolution calling for a public hearing on proposed assessments for unpaid services and ordering preparation of proposed assessments. Call for public hearing for an on-sale liquor license application for Wing Axe Company. Consider declaring two grass-rigged skid units for Marshall Fire Department as surplus. Consider approval for the joint powers agreement with the Minnesota Anti-Aeroin Task Force Program. Consider a resolution for the transfer of property to the Economic Development Authority. Consider a resolution of support for a job creation fund application. Consider approval of off-sale bingo for the American Legion at the Lyon County Fair. Consider approval for Holy Redeemer to conduct a raffle on January 29th, 2024. Consider approval of a raffle permit for SMSU Homecoming on October 14th, 2023. Introduction of an ordinance, Article 2, Section 7, administrative citations. Introduction of an ordinance amending Article 42-5 to prohibit the use of cannabis and hemp in public places. Acknowledgement and acceptance of the updated Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program, SWEP, for the city of Marshall. Call for public hearing for the sale of land located at 116 South 10th Street. And final, consider approval of the bills and project payments. Is there any item on the agenda that any council member wants removed for individual discussion or consideration?
Number 12.
Any others? Okay, with that, with that correction, or that requested removal, can entertain a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda. Second.
Motion been made by Amanda, seconded by John, to approve the remaining consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And that motion passes. So, item 12.
I would just like to see if we could kick this back to LNO. It's partly fault of the LNO committee because Stephen did send out an email to us. And I asked him, and CNI, Steve is not here, but CNI did not respond to it. But I think it's worth kicking this back to LNO to have us take a look at this before it comes forward to council.
Any other discussion? You can make that a motion.
I'll make that a motion.
Motion was made by Jim. Jim seconded.
Mr. Mayor Protem, sorry. I'm sorry for my late.
No, that's okay.
I was on mute, of course, trying to, trying to interrupt and was unsuccessful because I was on mute. So I just have a couple questions for council as far as, when in, in consideration of the motion, as far as putting parameters around it. You know, these, the, the use of these cannabis products, both higher level and lower level are becoming legal as of August 1st. And so in public places, which would include parks and roads and sidewalks, and they're in different forms, I would be curious as far as if there's any direction, if it is going to go back to LNO with respect to what would be a preference as far as, is it focusing just on smoking? Is it any type of the products edible or smoking? And is it limited to just focusing on parks? Or do you want to see sidewalks and roadways included as well? So I'm just curious if, and maybe this is an inappropriate conversation right now, but just in preparing something, if that's what the end result is going to be for an LNO committee, if we had a little bit of direction, that might be useful.
And that's a good question. I know absolutely no smoking, but beyond that, I think we need to talk at LNO. And I would like to see this kind of mirror what our alcohol policy is for parks and public places. So, and I just think it's a discussion that I'd like to have at LNO, and then bring it back to the council. But obviously, I was chatting before, I think our parks should be smoke-free. I know currently they're called tobacco-free, but I don't know how you enforce some, you know, I want to make it, if we make an ordinance, to make an enforceable ordinance. I hate making ordinances that cannot be enforced. It doesn't make sense. So that's what I would like to see kicked back to LNO and take kind of a look at this, to see what we can do, what makes sense, not just a broad, because it's law on August 1st, we got to throw something out there quick. That does not make sense to me.
Okay. So, and then just taking a look at the current ordinances to make sure that, that if the current ordinances don't address smoking in parks as they are written now, that that's something that LNO might be interested in as well?
I believe, I think that would be something that, you know, we can concur, look at, yes. I mean, that's my opinion. Obviously, there's for other people, I don't think any smoking should be allowed in their parks. But yes, I think we need to address that. I think we are called tobacco-free parks. Am I correct in saying that? I don't know how the ordinance, I know they call tobacco-free parks, but I don't know what the ordinance actually reads on tobacco.
I don't know if there's anything in the ordinances about being tobacco-free, and alcohol is prohibited unless community services authorizes by permit or permission.
Good.
So I think it's worth taking a look at, yes. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Is it bring the motion to a vote? Close the voting.
Sorry, I might have missed it, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's just have to change what the motion is, right?
Um.
Or we, this is just an introduction, so we just agree to the introduction of the ordinance. But then, do we need a motion to?
The motion is to kick you back to LNO.
Right. Do we need any clarification in what the, or I think the clarification was made to council on what the request was for the?
So we are not introducing it tonight?
That was not what the motion was.
Taking it back to LNO.
Correct. All right.
A removal from the introduction.
Yep.
Okay, very good. Are we, are you good with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for catching that, Amanda.
So did that vote? Okay, very good. So the next item on the agenda is to consider the request for a variance adjustment permit for reduced setbacks for an accessory building at 710 South Penn Avenue. Ilya, this is yours?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you. So this is a request to build a garage with a reduced yards. The rear yard is supposed to be 12 feet, but request is for five feet. And the side yard is supposed to be five feet, but request is for two feet. In order to prove the variance, the statutes and the ordinance requires meeting the practical difficulties test. And when Steph looks at that thing, it felt that for rear yard, those three criteria are met, but not for the side yard. At the planning commission meeting, the applicant, the owner, provided some additional clarifications. And as a result, planning commission voted to approve variance as requested, so five feet for the rear yard and two feet for the side yard. So that's the recommendation from the planning commission. And the alternative recommendation is to follow the staff recommendation and have five feet to the rear yard and keep the required five yard side, five feet side yard.
Discussion of planning commission was, you know, this garage is already two feet, current building is already two feet from the side yard. And if the owner commented that if you were to move it in further, that it would be harder to get access to because you have to access the garage from going around the side of the house. And so I think that was practical difficulty, in their opinion, and everyone agreed that.
So is the current garage coming down, correct?
Correct.
And then he's going to build the same size garage?
No, a little bit bigger.
But the current foundation footings are there. He's not using those foundations, that whole foundation?
Yeah, it will be, the new slab will be to match the garage where the owner wants to have it.
I guess I looked at the current garage, has been like that for, it's not a new structure.
No.
I mean, it is a new, it is a new structure, but it's.
The corners are going to be the same. The, the corners by the property line.
Are going to be the same. So if he would leave two walls on this garage, he could technically expand it and not have to get variance.
Uh, no, because you cannot, it's not in compliance right now. You cannot expand not compliant structures.
If it burnt down, we would allow him to rebuild it at its current size and current situation.
Correct. If the building permits are applied for within six months.
Any other discussion or questions?
Pam, I have a question for you. Are you up there?
I am, and I actually successfully unmuted myself.
That's good. And I know we've had this discussion before. If he completely takes this building down, we have to treat this as a new, like that building never existed, correct?
Well, I think that the focus of the council's discussion should be on that the building that's going to be put up is, doesn't comply with, with the current code as it's written, whether it is completely taken down or whether it's expanded. Because an expansion would change as, as well, as far as for a legal non-conforming use, an expansion kind of takes that protection away. So the question is, is whether there's practical difficulties that is tied to the lot and not necessarily created by the individual property owner themselves to be able to have a usable garage in that area for that property owner. And then the other things to consider is whether it changes the character of the area. And, and so that's, that's another big consideration, that that practical difficulties test takes into consideration. But really, the, you know, the conversation, and I think what the planning commission had decided, so council member Schrader, you can chime in since I think you're a planning commission, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is whether that the, the way that the lot is with respect to the setbacks, if it really makes it difficult to be able to have a usable garage to get in and out and access and that kind of thing.
That's correct. As I looked at other garages, or, you know, it was brought up the other garages in that neighborhood, that, a lot of these lots have the same issues and they are constrained, there are constraints based on the size and where the house is and.
Stephen, can you call up that aerial satellite view again?
If that, the new garage is going to be, the 36-foot dimension is going to be the dimension from the back lot towards the house, correct? It's going to be 36 from back lot up, and then 24.
Wide, yes.
Yeah. And, and the concern is, is the access comes, there's just enough width next to it to get passed on the property with a vehicle. And making it, moving it the other way makes that even more difficult to get shot into the garage.
Correct.
So, and that, that to me is, makes sense argument. I mean, I think that.
It does. The problem is, is these are sitting all over town. If you pull up the box seller neighborhoods, they built these garages five feet off the lot lines, slid them over. I want to say, yes, I'd like to support this, but it can be built three feet over with no problem. I mean, if that garage comes down, if this, a new garage could be easily constructed in there. There's easy turnaround from the backup, turn around and go out. So do we flex to rules here? But then we got people that we aren't flexing rules for. And I can take you through the name streets and show you garage after garage after garage, that they put them five feet off the line. It's that, we have the ordinance for a reason. The garage would easily work in there as the ordinance is written, because we're only sliding the garage over three feet. It's, he's two feet off the lot line, we're only sliding it over three feet. You pull your, again, I'd like to, I, I don't think the practical difficulty is there at all. Because he could pull and back his car up this way, zip right out that driveway. I would love to say it's, but I cannot justify practical difficulty here because I built these where they're not moved on it, five feet over.
But that's, yeah, that is going to close up 12 feet closer to the house.
It is, but he still would have access to back in and out of that.
14 feet closer to the house.
So, it's just that these are set, it's been done. It's, I can show you examples of where it's been done. And that, if there's none other in town where it could have been done, I'd say absolutely. But it's been done in town. So that's where I have the struggle with the practical difficulty. Because we, we made the ordinance, we need to kind of stick with our ordinance. Or change ordinance. Not that we're going to do that tonight, but I mean, that, that's my take.
My feeling on this, and I understand where you're coming from, and I respect that, it, it comes to me is that there's a number of these that the ordinance says, but the kind of the standard in my neighborhood is no different. There's a number of them that don't meet the height requirement, they don't meet the property line setbacks, they don't meet the alley setbacks. You know, it's a, it's part of the, the community, the neighborhood where those are built. So it is pretty common that none of those are conforming setbacks. And, you know, I, I agree that, you know, when we start, we should probably follow. But there again, this is a pretty, it's a pretty tight space. And that 50-foot lot gets pretty narrow on that backside. It's, it's not a square lot or a rectangle lot. It's a, it's got some pretty, pretty funky dimensions there. So he gets pretty narrow on the back also. And I understand that, too.
What's the neighbors' take, Amanda?
There was no concerns about the gal on the side yard, according to the property owner. And he didn't, hadn't heard back from.
There's nobody out there.
There was nobody there. And yeah, there was nobody there. And he said he hadn't heard from anybody behind, so.
How many cars?
Yeah, and I would just, I would just caution the, the council that to, to constrain your conversations about the practical difficulties based on, which I'm hearing, the, the nature and, and the configuration of the lot as opposed to, you know, it meets the character, so it's not, so it's not making a use different or something like that. But with respect to any of those, comparing it to other structures, we don't know when those other structures were built. And they might be legal non-conforming uses, which would, you know, have the same kind of conversation if they were to expand or replace. So just keep that in mind, too. It sounds as though council and planning commission has found things related to the lot to be significant, but I just wanted to clarify that.
How many vehicles?
If that makes sense.
How many vehicles fit in the current garage?
I assume two.
Okay. So they just want to make it a little.
For the bigger truck, I would guess.
Okay.
What are the wishes of the council?
I'd make a motion that we approve the request of Brayden Wifels for the variance adjustment permit.
Second.
Motion is made by Amanda, seconded by John, to approve the variance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote.
Approve is requested, correct.
The request. As requested, correct. No. With the two yard, or the two-foot side yard.
As requested.
Yeah.
And close the voting. And the motion does pass. Thank you. So Tall Grass Liquor Annual Report. Jim, are you handling this one? No? Okay. I just had to make sure you're paying attention.
Chairman Schaefer and rest of the council, I have a document here. We prepared for our liquor store operations for 2022. Would like to just go through and brief you guys on those happenings for 2022. So, go to page three there, liquor operations. Again, we're all in this here since a long time ago to serve the customer. And then profits from our liquor operations provide a much-needed revenue source for the Marshall community. Profits from the municipal liquor store help to reduce property tax levy, which I think we contribute about $400,000 for the year to decrease that levy. And then also for special projects that we've done in the past. Couple of those notable ones, the trails at Independence Park. And I think we also did some, some equipment for the police department, I think, this year, right, Jim? All right. So those funds are much needed to help, help in those departments. So organizational structure, we have currently 17 people on staff, four full-time, and then 13 part-time clerks. Just a quick comment, running a great operation in the store requires great people. So fortunate to have those longtime employees, the full-time employees and staff, and then also our liquor part-time clerk. So, mission statement, one of the things here, I'll just make a quick comment here. The, the game has changed a little bit with the sale and control of alcohol. We're now kind of doing the sale and control of intoxicated beverages with the introduction of THC, seltzers, edibles, and all the above. One of the things I've told EJ, I've been working on a revised handbook that kind of updates us to what current law is and things like that. So, again, we provide the best quality shopping experience, experience for our customers, and a profit that is reinvested back into the community, and provide an environment that is positive for customers, associates, and managers. So you can see the store priorities at the bottom there. So we get into 2022, financials there, sales and profits. Overall, sales of liquor store operation were $7,078,000. Net profit about $944,000, $950,000. There was an increase of total sales by about $352,000. Net profit decrease of $54,000 when compared to 2021. So if you look at your sales history, it's, it's stayed at a high level since COVID. We're proud of that as far as seeing that. And I'll kind of allude to that a little bit here later in the report. Income profitability, we hit a spike in 2020, you can see that. And then things have kind of stayed at a high level, which is really good to see compared to 2018, 2019. So we've kind of doubled kind of profitability and, and some of those things there that will help the city and the specific departments there. So as far as sales, gross profit by category, you can see page five there, you have a pie there. No surprise, beer is our biggest seller, 46%, followed by spirits, wine, and then the mix of miscellaneous. And this will be updated next year with the THC category, with the edibles and seltzers and that. So stay tuned for that. And I'll kind of give you an update here, how things have been going since July 1st. So overall, beer trends about 50% in, in the summer. And so these numbers here are a little bit lower, but we're around 50 to 52% in the summer, just because that's, that's the trend and that's what we're seeing. You can kind of see that bottom graph there that has the gross profit by category. You can kind of see spirits, wine, and mix of miscellaneous, which is kind of general merchandise, like your mixers of orange juice and Bloody Mary and all that kind of stuff. We're trending well over 30%, which is a great trend. You see the beer, which is not substantially less, but it is less. And you can kind of see, well, beer contributes a lot of sales, but it's not as profitable. We're in kind of a, a good situation. We, we're known for maybe more of a craft beer selection. You can kind of see that when you come in. So we do have a lot of Minnesota craft, a lot of national craft, which are at a premium price, and that kind of offsets a little bit of our domestic stuff, like your Coors Light and Miller Lite and some of those. So I think we have a pretty good gross profit outlook and what we've been seeing here in the previous years. So I think the auditor, when I was here, oh, two, three weeks ago, said that our municipal liquor store is well over 28% GP, where the, I think the average municipal is around 26%. So that's a great trend to kind of keep that. And I'll kind of talk a little bit about that here at the end, about why that's the case. So you can kind of see your monthly sales. Obviously, January, February is a lot slower, beginning of the year. You got dry January, you got, you know, everyone's healthy, this, healthy for you, you know, they're talking all about that. I don't know if they're doing it or not. But, but anyway, so you've got that mix. January and February traditionally are a little slower as you begin the year. March kind of then starts the uptick with March Madness, St. Patrick's Day, and all that kind of stuff. Summer, you can kind of see that really spikes up. So we have a really great May, June, July. August hangs on a little bit. September, October, a little bit softer. And then we're into the holiday time where you can kind of see the biggest month of the year is December. And so there's a traditional, big spending for presents and gifts and all the above and kind of indulgent types of things. So, so the trends, as we kind of continue on, ready-to-drink cocktails, continue to have a strong pull with our customers, ready-to-drink cocktails, continue to strengthen, they still have a big strength that's impacting that wine purchaser this past year. Our wine category has been soft and has actually decreased a little bit in total sales. Craft beer, especially Minnesota-made, continues to be popular among beer customers. So events, we do lots of in-store events with tastings, and it helps trial for new products. And just in general, overall categories, people have a better instance of purchasing something if they kind of try it before. We do some in-store events in the fall, which is kind of a bigger season. The Fall Wine Walkabout, which is kind of a, a wine tasting, three or four tables with a few wines on each table that can kind of get an idea for the holiday timeframe, like Thanksgiving and some of those events and stuff. So we try to promote those for our customers. And then we do a winter, and then a kind of a seasonal, 'Tis the Season Holiday Sampling Event, which also promotes purchasing for the holidays, especially Christmas. And then in May, we do a, we co-sponsor with the Visit Marshall, the Made in Minnesota Craft Beer Festival and Wine Festival. And that's held at the arena at, in May, about the third weekend. We had 32 vendors and about 400 attendees sample breweries and wineries from across the state. So this is Minnesota-made. So that's all, it's, there's no different beers from the East Coast, West Coast, all Minnesota-made. So really, great local tie, and we're, we're a part of that because we carry all the beers that we sample there. So, community service support, you can kind of see a few things that we are involved in at the store level, which we collect loose change, or we get a grant from the MMBA, which we pass that along to some local charities. Accomplishments, staff obviously continue to learn about beverage alcohol, off-sale control and training and carding and all the above there. Myself, along with a, a full-time associate, attended the Minnesota Municipal Beverage Association Regional Meeting. And then our staff also goes to the annual, the regional meeting, goes, our staff goes to that, and then also the annual meeting, too. So completed West Set, which is wine spirits educational training, Level 1. So know, know a little bit more about the wine, and so on there. Semi-annual review, you can kind of see what our, what we're tracking here year-to-date through June. Sales are still on a really good trend as far as being up. Customer count, same, same kind of story there. Customer count, same kind of story there. It's trending well. Average ticket, obviously, there's some inflationary things going on there too, where we've seen that average ticket kind of tick up a little bit because prices have gone up. And so you can kind of see that in the graph below that. Again, slow start January, Feb., and then things kind of kick in as we get into spring and summer. Proposed budget, we've kind of taken a conservative 3% increase over 2023. We're trending about 4% ahead so far for 2023. I think customers are continuing to see the value and selection that Tall Grass offers with their shopping experience. We talked about gross profit as being a big part of our business. A lot of those other expenses are fixed. Labor and some of those things, utilities for the most part, they don't really, but our gross profit is something you can control. And we've done a pretty good job. And by that, I mean, we've made in some investments to hedge ourself with a freestanding merchandiser, 50ml merchandiser, that can promote shopping for customers rather than having them locked up in the back. You know, you don't sell very much. Then we've also added open-air, two open-air coolers for displaying single cans, which are more of a high gross profit or high profitable item. And then the pick-six, mix-and-match area, which is also one that promotes trial, but us also at a higher gross profit. All these are designed for customers to add-on purchases or make an impulse purchase benefiting the store with a higher ticket average and increased gross profit dollars. We have the online ordering platform, which is another thing that we've introduced earlier. And we've enhanced that through CityHeide, which has been successful, where people can order online. It's a secure platform that people put their credit card in, similar to Amazon. You know, you can even pull it up now if you go to tallgrassliquor.com and see what that's all about if you want. But we rolled this out last fall and end of, kind of August, September 2022, and it continues to grow in usage. So you can kind of see, this is what, you can go on there and we can customize it for banners like this. We can put our, if you scroll down, you can put the specials. And you can really do a lot of different things that maybe Amazon does well, we can do the same thing. It's got the algorithms to kind of promote shopping and maybe add-on things or suggestions. So it is pretty good for, it costs $49 a month. And so we're pleased with that. So we have, I bet, four to six orders come in a day. So that's one thing that we've done well, getting off the ground. The other item that we, I think, presented last fall was the video surveillance upgrade. We began that after approval through the council was, in 2022, we added a larger server, a recording server, and additional cameras inside and outside to the existing configuration to better get the coverage on the building on the exterior and in the interior on the sales floor. So the other thing that, a couple of things that we've got in the works that I'll explain here, plans are being made for an ad to add a locked display cabinet for allocated and high-end spirits so that customers can shop these products on the floor. So this is going to be out kind of in one of the sections. We identified the Scotch section, which we can condense and put this cabinet that'll be locked, where people can still see inside and say, oh, you have this. Or, and I don't, you know, I can't tell you how many times people are calling and they're asking about things, do you have this? Do you have, you know, whatever? And so this will give customers an option to get out and look at that. We also went ahead and purchased two more open-air refrigerated merchandise, merchandisers to increase our offerings of cold-ready drinks, single-serve cans, and then also do our wine justice. And that's the wine one right there where it's all in one cooler. And so you've got some of the bottles, some of the more popular bottle wines on the bottom. You've got some other kind of cans and some different things that are kind of popular right now for grab-and-go. And so again, these are all very good margin enhancers and add-on sales, impulse buying. And so those are a couple of recent things that we've gotten off the ground there. So we're also looking at, maybe looking at some message centers, not as big as the one out in the hall here, but something that can help advertise our tastings, our specials, and new products and things like that. And so working with Alex here at Studio One to help us put some of those monitors in the store to so people, and get rid of the paper and the clutter and kind of do that. So the other last thing that I would like to kind of bring up, we're looking at maybe an ATM machine on site, which would be an initiative that is important if something happens where the credit card goes down or whatever, and that. So that's being looked at by the store and the city staff. And so the THC seltzer and edibles. So we started that July 1st, and we've done about $2,000 in sales, which I've checked with some of the other municipals, and that's been kind of what they've seen. It isn't going crazy. It's kind of there. You know, we get some calls and say, hey, do you have this? I say, yeah, we do. And so we're kind of going, starting this, being a little more conservative with, we're not really doing a whole lot, we're not really doing any advertising, I don't think. But it's close to the register, the edibles are behind the counter, cash only at this point in time. Everyone gets carded, and that's by law and that. So that's kind of a new thing. Will it be big? I don't know, you know, it's hard to say right now. But, so that's what I've got. Any questions that I can answer that I haven't?
I have a question. First of all, honestly, Eric, you do a wonderful job. I think the liquor store is run as best as it's been running years. So you do a great job at it. But I did catch some numbers in here. Somebody has to take down a paracorder spot, and I'm proud to do that. You said the sales increased by $352,000, but the net profit is down by $54,000. I just want a little better explanation on that and understand your costs with the work, the work study, probably your labor costs. But I just want to hear maybe a little better explanation why we're up $352,000, but our net profit is down by 54.
Well, I think, was, what I heard in the audit report, there was a pension expense? Or what was, what would you?
Yeah, we have a pension liability that gets set via audit, and then it gets allocated to our funds based on number of employees. So with the increased pension liability that we had as a city, some of that share got shifted as well to Tall Grass.
Okay.
That increased as well as just other personnel costs, things of that nature.
Okay. So, and like you said, I think the store's run better than I've seen it run in a long time. You do a great job.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Eric? Thank you, Eric, nice job.
All right, thank you.
Can I just quick, Eric, I think, mentioned that it was $400,000 that went to reduced property tax. For '22, it was actually $575,000 that we used from liquor store profits. So of the $90,000 worth of profit, $575,000 was transferred to the General Fund and Debt Service Funds to help lower levy. And then I was going to have Stephen put up one more picture. Went to the LMC conference this year in Duluth. And at the TSP Architecture Booth, they actually have a picture of Tall Grass Liquor on their banner yet from when they helped construct that. So I thought that was pretty cool that Tall Grass was represented.
Do we get a, we get a pinch of that? Any royalties after that?
Banner for several years, so that royalty check should be pretty big.
Well, it's all Jim.
Yeah. Want to get on that?
Very good. Thanks again, Eric.
Thank you.
And that pretty much takes us through our agenda for those items. So now we're up to council member individual items. And I'll do what the mayor does, and I'll start off and go first with my commission board liaison reports. The Merritt Commission met last Thursday. I was unable to attend, but I know that one of the special things that happened there was, that was Jasmine's last official meeting as the coordinator at Merritt, as she's assumed a promotional position within the city. And I just want to say publicly that while I'm really happy for her, I'm a little bit sore because, as I've talked to Public Safety Director Jim Marshall, who is, sees over the Merritt Center as one of his responsibilities, she's going to be hard to replace out there. She's done an amazing job. I know that her and Alex have worked together on a number of things. I had the pleasure of serving with her as part of the COVID testing pieces way back when that all first hit and Vera was looking at doing a testing site. Alex and Jasmine were real key players in that and making it a success. And a lot of the city staff supported that. And Jasmine is a good addition to community services where she's going to be going on. And so they're lucky, we're a little bit sad, but we're very happy that the city's not losing her. But those are going to be some tough shoes to fill. So, and that's all I have. Amanda?
I have plenty. I guess Planning Commission, we did address what went on in the Planning Commission with the variance adjustment permit. Public Housing met last Monday, and they approved more new patio doors for Parkview so that would replace all the doors at Parkview. And then at their East Main unit, we introduced a new board member, Jennifer Katz, and elected officers. Other than that, nothing too out of the ordinary. Economic Development Authority, there was a public hearing for the transfer of property to the EDA for Midwest Shop Condos, which will be out in the industrial park on Michigan Road. Kind of a cool and exciting project coming forth. He is looking to rent out, like, units to contractors or small business owners or people who are just getting started. So I will end with that.
Good, thank you. John?
Yeah, MMU met last week. They had a decent-sized agenda. I'll just give you the highlights here. They modified new and drug, excuse me, drug-free workplace employee policies. August 1st, the legalization of cannabis is just around the corner. Giving direction to MMU employees and management team is an important first step in protecting employees' rights and MMU's safety performance standards. After important discussions, the commission unanimously approved the policies. The Marshall Solar Plus Project is still on track to start in mid-August and will, with a completion date of fall of 2024. Electric projects are ongoing and are working closely with the city to get streetlights and traffic signal electric meters and infrastructure installed for the downtown street project. The Water Department is also working close with the city on the downtown street project. The customer online portal access to their electric and water meters is moving along with the alpha testing of the software and phone app ongoing. MMU believes that this new customer service opportunity will be operational for their customers by late fall of 2023. MMU is waiting on an engineering study to determine if or when new distributive generation should be built. The current distribution generation is a 15.5-megawatt turbine generator that was built in 1969. The turbine is over 54 years old and has exceeded its operational lifespan. Is a credit to the employees who perform maintenance and operate the turbine that MMU can still take advantage of a working generator. MMU needs to evaluate when and where a new generation facility could be built to replace the aging turbine generator. More on that subject in the future as MMU evaluates a completed engineer's report. And then finally, we got to, or they just took possession of a new electric truck, a pickup, Ford F-150. You should see it driving around town, white pickup. It'll have MMU stickers on the side of it, very nice. That's it.
Thank you, John. See?
Yes, the SRD, the Southwest Regional Development Commission had its annual meeting last Thursday. We met at the Lower Sioux Incubator, which is a brand-new building that they were able to build with the assistance of the SRDC and helping them write a grant. It's a beautiful building. So if you ever get a chance to go down to Morton there, check out their building. They had, they gave us a tour, and they had these cool classrooms where the community, their community members can come and do art, music. And they have a sewing room, and then they have room for the elders to come and have lunch there free of charge every day. So that was really neat. And then they also celebrated their 50th anniversary. So Jay, the director, went through 50 years of SRDC and got to see how people have aged through the 50 years that have been there. So, and then the CVB met last week, and we had the athletic director from Marshall School District come and kind of go over some, a lot of the improvements that the school has made on for the baseball fields and track fields, things like that. And so they are, one of the big projects they're looking forward to is adding a parking lot behind the high school by the baseball fields and the tennis court so that way there's accessibility for more families to be able to go over there. Because right now, you have to park over at the theater and walk all the way. So CVB approved to give some, donate some money over to the school district to make those improvements. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Jim?
I have nothing.
Individual council member items, Jim, we'll start with you.
Couple of things. Well, first I want to start with, they're all positive, a very positive person today. I actually drove by and looked at Terrace 1897.
1872.
1872.
I can't believe you blew that.
I did blow that, but it looks wonderful. I called Preston this morning and complimented him, I want to do it publicly. Preston and his crew did a great job. What a wonderful space. I think back four years ago, we had a dilapidated building there. And we, it's a, and I have not made one of the Thursday evening concerts, which I regret, I want to do that. I know Craig, you've been there, you said it was a great experience. Then on my travels along the area, I wandered on down the Third Street. And I said, boy, that's turning out nice. I mean, I look at the opportunity that we have for our downtown community and the gathering space. I made a comment before, there's a certain outlet mall I like to go to up in the cities. And I think we're replicating that with what we're doing here. I mean, I was different, but we have a very walkable, very usable downtown. And the staff, you know, Jason, your staff on designing and working getting Third Street designed, I think is going to look wonderful. And with that coming online, I look at the apartments, to me, it's exciting. We have apartments that should be coming online next month. They're going to drop hopefully 60 people in downtown living here. And our downtown is viable for a town this size in rural America. That's a huge thing. We've worked with our community members, our businesses downtown, and we have a nice-looking, modern-looking, viable downtown, and I think that's great. Then the other thing I want to comment, and it goes against the parking wreck, and Sharon sent that letter out for me about the wonderful job. And I was not at the baseball tournament, I was actually at one in the cities. I have a nephew, godson that plays up there, I went to watch him. But the credit that we got for the baseball tournament we had in town this last weekend, 21, 22 teams, and it just, they said it went off without a hitch and that the staff did a great job. And that's good for Marshall, bring those people into town. I'd like to see those people come to town instead of me driving to the cities. I'm going to pull those teams down here so I can watch my godson here in Marshall and sleep in my own bed. So, but I think that's a credit, again, to Preston and his staff, that they do a great job, and we have nice facilities. And it, yes, I know sometimes you complain about taxes, but we have a nice community, and it looks good, and our staff. And as a council member, very proud of that. That's all I have.
Nicely said, Jim, thank you. See?
I don't have anything.
John?
Nope.
I don't have anything.
Jim said it all, he's right.
Geez, drop the mic. Sharon?
President, pro tem, and members, August 1st, National Night Out, 4:00 to 7:00. Lots of people come to that, and I know Jim and his staff have been doing a lot of work preparing for it. We're going to talk about the Aquatic Center there too. I know I sent some information out on that a little bit. August 8th, we've got an event at the Aquatic Center too, another promotion of our Aquatic Center. Just promoting information is really what we're trying to do. And then we're going to participate in the summer parade on the 19th of August. And we still continue to present to groups as we make note and put them in our calendars. So that's been really ongoing. Terrace 1872, we do have intentions of still putting a piece of artwork Terrace 1872, we do have intentions of still putting a piece of artwork in that main body. Right now, we just put plants in there, they can be transferred out. We'll work with the SMOC, the Arts Association here, the Regional Arts Association, apply for a grant in November. And I know there's reference to Jasmine. I don't know if I fully informed council. She's not a division director, so I kind of keep it to a minimum, staff changes, because we, we do have them occurring on a regular basis, and I get city halls a little bit closer to everybody. But yeah, Jasmine DeSmet will start as a community ed coordinator for the city on August 28th, and, and we'll work with Jim in between time. If there needs to be some help back and forth, we'll, we'll work it out so nobody's left in a bind. So that's all I had, President Pro Tem.
Thank you. Jason?
Thank you. So I'll just give a quick project update. On the downtown project that was referenced earlier, the Third and Lyon Project, RNG Construction does intend to come back onto the project site and start work on Lyon Street, possibly as early as the end of this week, maybe, maybe next week. So some, we're, it's a little fluid yet, we're working on that. We expect them to most likely work in front of the movie theater on that block of Lyon Street and maybe just pass the post office to start. But again, we're still working on the details of what that work plan looks like. So the residents and downtown businesses can expect some changes coming forward. We'll likely try to work with the, the business owners and the contractors to maybe facilitate a one-way alley from Third to College Drive, because with that block of Lyon Street being under construction, there'll be no access to that parking lot but for the alley off of College Drive there. So with that alley being so narrow, and now that being a two-way only access into the Addison Parking Lot across from the movie theater, we are going to explore a one-way alley there with some temporary signage. So we'll keep working on that, but I wanted the council to be aware of those changes.
Does the contractor intend to have the same frequency of meetings as we had with the Third Street?
Yeah.
The Third Street portion of it?
Yes, good question. We, we have been meeting weekly with the contractor and any, anybody willing to show up. The contractor's also done a pretty nice job of sending out some pretty regular email notices to anybody on our email list, and we've got, I, I think, a really good list of business owners in the, in the area that are on the list.
Excellent.
Other project items, the Pond Project that we call Legion Phase Two, Legion Field Phase Two, the contractor was there digging boring pits today, and we expect them to bore under the railroad tracks probably next week with that pipe, and then start digging the pond over there adjacent to the Parkway Pond. So that's getting going. You've probably noticed the mill and overlay, the mill has gone through, a lot of streets are now milled. We expect most streets to get overlaid beginning next week. North Seventh Street is the exception, that was paved this last Saturday. Lastly, Channel Parkway likely to start in the second week of August, or on August 7th, we're being told right now, so we'll keep it, keep that monitored. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Pam?
Just a few items, just so that the council's aware, we're busy working with staff and educating about different policy changes in addition to reviewing ordinances to update them, to comply with all the many, many, many changes, not just cannabis that came out of the recent session. So, so just so that you know, we're busy working on that.
Okay, thank you. So remaining information, there's items on cash and investments, the Planning Commission June meeting minutes, list of building permits, and then again, the list of upcoming meetings. Is there anything else to come before the council tonight?
I make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion been made by Jim, seconded by Amanda to adjourn. Any further discussion?
Just, thank you, Craig, we're filling in, you did a wonderful job.
Thank you, it was my pleasure, appreciate it. Ruins patience and stuff, and we're good to go, so I'll call this to a vote. Close the voting. And nobody wanted to stay. All right, that passes, we're adjourned, thank you.